Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, June 4th, 2025. We have some meeting announcements. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for guest speakers, please do not turn your microphones off if you're joining us at the table. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Four members present. Mr. Lavelle.
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. We do not have any registered speakers, so anyone who wishes to speak may approach the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. I'm Pamela Roll Johnson. I live at 211 Blue Street in Fineview neighborhood on the north side, 15214. And I just wanted to thank City Council for the consideration of extending the sick day legislation, and those that sponsored it, and came to the public hearing last week to hear our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Marla Blunt. I'm from Homewood, Washington area 15208. And I would also like to thank City Council for putting the bill forth, and for everyone that showed up and stand with us, and everyone who's supporting the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Pete Schmidt. I'm the Western PA Area Leader for SEIU Local 32.
Mr. Sharland.
I reside at 1203 Monterey Street, excuse me, north side 15212. I also want to reiterate what Pam and Marla just said, and truly give our thanks for City Council, everyone on City Council who's sponsoring this legislation. As a native Pittsburgher, a native Northsider, and someone who grew up in the original era of most livable city back in the eighties, I think in order to continue having that title and making sure that that is a true title, that Pittsburgh deserves, a piece of legislation that takes care of the working people of Pittsburgh, and a common sense piece of legislation that does this, I think is of the utmost necessity in 2025, in order to keep making sure that Pittsburgh is truly a livable city. So I just wanted to say that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's the Katy where Irving's tires up on Beaufort Avenue. I was coming this morning, and I was feeling really bad, really, really down. But then I was carrying these flowers. A homeless man brought these to me yesterday, and he had said that there's a field full of wildflowers. And this just makes me feel better, because when I come down here, they really disrespect me and treat me bad. But for a homeless man that has nothing to give someone that I have much compared to him, this, that shows me that I am appreciated by a human being. Also, I want to explain to you that I have been coming to City Council for over 20 something years. I am an advocate for children, youth, family, seniors, hospital workers, and homeless. I speak for the homeless. And what had happened was there was a homeless... Well, I've had a stroke, and in the building where I live, we have crack addicts that are threatening me and beating up old people with hammers and sticks in the building. Well, me, I worked at Western Psych, and I was taught you won't half of the battle if you can get away. So I walked to town and I walked back to be able to run, because I'm not going to just let you stand there and beat me. But my mother was 92 when she died, and my mother said this, "I don't care who they are, I don't care what they look like, I don't care if man or woman, if they jump on you, if you can't do nothing but bite." And I have been going to pit dental school for a whole year, and I'm telling anyone that jumps on me, "I'm going to try to bite you till I die." I have already gotten jumped on in that building by a sumo wrestler before. And when I went to critique, he said, "You have your disk, but you don't have your personal computer, and I don't either. There's a machine back there, and it might not even work." So he refused to show it, and I knew that was wrong. I called another district attorney magistrate, and he said, "Oh, my God." And he gave me a paper to take down to the district attorneys down in the prison, down there where the prison is. They didn't accept it. I'm telling you, I have went to county council, and had county council when I said that we need a bus to go to the hospital. And they asked them, "Well, that's your neighborhood." He said, "Nah, can't nobody come down here with a hidden agenda." You know what my hidden agenda was? My daughter takes me back and forth to the doctor. I don't have to worry about it, but there's 190 senior citizens, some of them handicapped, mentally, physically, wheelchairs, and walkers, that can't get down there. But my daughter takes me, I don't have to worry about it. And I'm coming to fight for the others. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine, The Missing Child, Cerise Taylor. Oh, Lord, thank you for bringing me here. I'm here for a reason. I'm the light that is overcoming the darkness in this place. It's amazing. A lot of people are not here, wonder why. God is in control, that's why. All things are possible to Him who believes. Exodus 14:13 says, "Moses said to the people, 'Do not be afraid; stand still and see the salvation of the Lord, which He will accomplish for you today. For the Egyptians whom you see today, you shall see again no more forever.'" Welcomed and protected. Sometimes I don't feel welcome. There are a lot of people that want me dead, but God still has me standing here before you. John 6:37 says, "All that the Father giveth me shall come to me, and him that cometh to me, I will let no wise cast out." Lord, I return to send her an evildo hex's curses sent towards me, 100 million, billion, trillion googoplex, and whoever's sending it, Lord, please throw them into a lake of fire. Proverbs 3:25 through 26 says, "Have no fear of sudden disaster, of the ruin that overtakes the wicked; for the Lord will be your confidence, and will keep your foot from being snared." There's a lot of wickedness that goes on in this place. Y'all come here like this is an ATM or something. You have original prices, or you approve original amounts, then you increase them. Like, this is an ATM. This is not an ATM. I'm so sorry. Those increases y'all take, and y'all go on vacation, y'all do whatever y'all want to do, y'all go wherever y'all want to go. PRT is a perfect example. July 1st, there'll be $100 million in deficit. How? Where to go? The IRS won't find out, I promise you. They had no idea that I would be a special official for them after working two seasons. They had no idea I would be coming here to find money for them to audit. Like, this $10,000 that Kimberly got, and she makes over $100,000 a year. Like, for what? What was this $10,000 for? We need hours, minutes, and seconds on it. That's what we need on that, in Jesus' name. Lord, thank you for using me as a vessel to find this money out here, this being misused and mishandled, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we will now move on to the Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee. We have a few deferred papers. We'll start by reading, if you wouldn't mind reading, Madam Clerk, Bills 1667 and 1691 together.
Bill 1667, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Mohammed Burney for Tuition Reimbursement for an Amount Not to Exceed $33,292 over one year. And Bill 1691, Resolution Transferring the Amount of $33,292 within the 2025 operating budget from City Council District's salaries and wages regular to City Council District's employees' employee benefits for the purpose of tuition reimbursement.
Motion to withdraw?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we need a roll call for motion to withdraw? No. All those in favor of the motion to withdraw Bills 1667, 1691, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is affirmed. We move on to Bill 1736.
Bill 1736, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title VI Conduct, Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions, Chapter 626, Paid Sick Days Act, Section 626.03, Accrual of Sick Time, so as to change the rate at which employees can accumulate paid sick leave hours, and increase the maximum total amount of paid sick leave hours that can be accumulated.
Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
Second with discussion, Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. First, I'd like to make a motion to amend by substitution.
So moved. I'm sorry, second?
Motion and a second for amendment, discussion on amendment?
Sure, discussion. All this does is effectively add a section two, which reads, "A, the amendments of this ordinance shall take effect on January 1st, 2026." And the reason is, well, there's a couple reasons. One, it allows us sort of ramp up time to both inform and educate as to the changes of this ordinance. Two, it also allows us time to work with, in particular, what I would categorize as very small businesses. When we did this, I'm trying to think, first year we did this, over four years ago, there were members who had expressed concern over truly sort of mom and pop shops, and the effect that this would have on them, and how we could support them. This is certainly not an effort to say that UPMC and our large employers should absolutely be doing this. They should have been doing this a long time ago. But there is concern for those very small businesses, and how this will affect them. And so, part of members want additional time to work with the URA and other potential funders, to find support for them, to find grant dollars, small business loans, things of that nature, that can help them adjust to this if necessary. So that's the reason why we're bringing forth this amendment first. We have had the conversation with the leadership of the union, and they also understand the need for this sort of runway time as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending Bill 1736, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Amendment passes. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? I will just say a few comments, because I haven't gotten a chance to speak on this bill. Very much in support of these changes. I'm happy to support today. Our workers are the backbone of our city. Obviously, we need to support our workers in every way possible. People should, you know, it seems obvious now, because we've been having these discussions since the original bill passed, but people should not have to choose between caring for any of their loved ones, a child, an older adult in their life, a parent, and themselves, and being able to stay healthy and ensure that the health of others around them is paramount, to the ability to have an effective city and effective workforce. So I'm supportive of this bill today, and these amendments today. And to the Council President's point, very much in favor of not amending this bill further, passing it as is today, and just finding a complementary vehicle, whether it is exploring with your existing URA grants and loans, whether it is, and marketing in a slightly different way, or other vehicles for just demonstrating support for the smallest of businesses that might be hanging on by a thread right now, you know, given fluctuating costs, inflation, tariff, you know, insecurity about tariffs, you name it, just to ensure that, not because of this bill, but because of many other factors, that we're ensuring that they get the support that they need. So that's another complementary topic and kind of area of interest of mine, but wanted to mention it today for any small business owners who might be listening, that it's something I want to continue to prioritize. Again, somewhat related to this bill, but really its own topic in and of itself. Any further discussion on the bill? Councilman Wilson.
I just want to thank everyone that was a part of making this happen. I know, Councilman Lavelle, you championed the bill, so I appreciate you working on this, and all the sponsors that were a part of it. And then also, everyone who spoke at the public hearing. It was great to hear, you know, your story, and what happens in the workplace. And it's an honor to be a part of this council that continues to support workers in so many ways, and looking forward to voting yes here in a second.
Thank you. I'll echo your appreciation of the sponsors and everyone who spoke. Seeing no further comments, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Bill 2025, 1736, as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation.
That moves us on to new papers, Bill 1868.
Bill 1868, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Adler Tree Service Doing Business as Adler Tree Service and Landscaping for Emergency Storm Response to Remove a Tree Fell on the Residence at 205 Millbridge Street, Pittsburgh 15210, on March 13th, 2025, in an Amount Not to Exceed $6,750.
Approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Discussion?
Brief discussion.
Councilperson Sharland.
So this is in my district, you know, and I hope that we can, out of the emergency that we had with the storm, I hope that we can learn from that and be prepared to not just do this in case of these emergencies, that these tree situations are a real crisis in my district, and many of our districts, all the time, kind of every spring. And I hope that we can figure out a better mechanism than to just pay for, you know, pay for these emergency situations, and can actually figure out a way to help private owners with these emergency situations. I hope that is something that's been said, that will be a view of the administration going forward. I hope that it continues. Lord knows I've sounded the alarm on this enough, that this really is a problem that I deal with. And every spring, I dread these heavy rains, knowing that this is kind of the situation that can happen here. So I do hope that it's something that we can move forward with a better policy and a better mechanism to help homeowners, because we have the programs to help people, once a tree falls on your house, we don't have the programs to stop the tree from falling on your house in the first place. So happy to support, and thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1868, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1869. Bill 1869, Resolution Amending Resolution 372 of 2023, which authorized the mayor and city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney, PC, for expert legal services in connection with human resource-related legal litigation by extending the contract another year and increasing the total not-to-exceed amount by $40,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $80,000 over the course of two years.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Just briefly, did we have executive session on this? Okay. Happy to support, but I would like, if the law department, looking at Jesse, if we could follow up on what this is about at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1869, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Do we have a motion on invoices?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I do have a note on invoices here, and we do not need to waive the rules, but you'll notice that there are seven different invoices that total over $5,000 related to McGann &amp; Chester. We do not have a renewed contract with McGann &amp; Chester. We are following up on that. Because there are separate charges, we do not need to, for separate instances of towing, we do not need to waive the rules, but did want to note that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P-cards. Is there a motion on P-cards?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? We do need to waive the rules on P-cards. I'll bring that note back up again. And this is something that has been approved by us before. There's a $5,600 transaction that DPW has with the State Department of Environmental Protection for solid waste stickers for their environmental services vehicles. They're only able to make one request for all of the stickers they need, and so thus the total often exceeds the $5,000 limit. So we need a motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of waiving the rules of council for the P-card approvals, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Further discussion on P-cards? All those in favor of P-cards, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. P-cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
New Papers, Bill 1863, Resolution Authorizing Pursuit to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from the Allegheny Kiskey Health Foundation in the Amount of $9,090 to Purchase Compressed Air Carts for EMS.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1863, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1864.
Bill 1864, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Purvis Systems Incorporated in an Amount Not to Exceed $50,245 for Payment of Batteries and Installation Services of the Station Alerting System at the Training Academy and Fire Station 7.
Motion to approve.
Second. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1864, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilwoman Warwick.
Supplemental New Papers, Bill 1899, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the concrete portion of Verona Boulevard from Paquita Road to 7281 Verona Boulevard be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 417.06 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Councilperson Sharland.
Is someone here to talk about this?
I can speak to the sisters, no one, for them.
Councilman Mosley.
Yes, so this was part of my paving request, and there was some missed or mixed signals, however you want to look at it. And there was a misunderstanding of where the municipal border ended, and when they began knowing the street, they thought that Paquita Road was the end of the municipal border between Pittsburgh and Tin Hills, but actually it is 7281, which was in my initial
And so it's my understanding that due to the previous bill passed by Councilman Coghill, putting asphalt over a Belgium Block street needs council approval, thus why this bill was introduced.
So this bill is not to extend the paving, but it's because of that we're paving with asphalt and not with brick, right?
Right, right. So it was two issues. The first issue was, there was a misunderstanding of where the municipal border was. And then also, to go over the Belgium Block, which is in extreme disrepair, if anybody's driven on that stretch of the road, it makes a much more sense just to get rid of that Belgium Block and pave it with just regular asphalt, so that folks can actually drive their cars. I was at that intersection with State Representative Joe McAndrew this weekend, and people are literally, it's basically like, people are driving Moon Rovers and like, crossing the yellow line back and forth to avoid, you know, destroying their cars. So that's why the legislation was needed, to be able to go over the quote-unquote Carfree Street or Belgium Block Street, because of past legislative actions that our body has taken.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Warwick.
I just, I think I saw a little bit about this in the news. I would say, just generally, among colleagues, it's pretty easy to get people's phone numbers, give them a call, and, you know, figure things out, I think. Anyway, that's all. Intergovernmental cooperation.
This is what we're about.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on Bill 1899? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1899, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. New Papers, Bill 1870.
Bill 1870, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Gannett Fleming, Inc., for Costs Associated with the Smithville Street Reconstruction Project, providing for the payment of the costs thereof not to exceed $1,707,042.29, an increase of $227,715.25 from the previously executed agreement, as previously authorized by Resolution 336 of 2023, to add funding for the final design and construction phases of the project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1870, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilperson Sharland.
New Papers, Bill 1861, Resolution Providing for the Filing of Applications by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for Grants in Connection with the Joint Jobs Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network, and Providing for the Authorization to Enter into Agreements with various agencies, and to Pay for Expenditures for Costs to Support, Implement, and Administer the Program, Costs Not to Exceed $3,828,594.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1861, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Supplemental New Papers, Bill 1884, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 148 of 2020, which authorized a Contract Renewal with with Questica, Inc., to provide a subscription-based budgeting and performance management system by updating the legal vendor name to Unisolutions, extending the term for one year, and increasing the approved amount by eighty-six thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars for a new total cost not to exceed four hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars over six years.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion?
Second.
Second, with discussion, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Um, I just got these bills this week, but I'm told that they are, um, used by both our City Council Budget Office, that the software is used by both our City Council Budget Office and, um, the Administrative Side Budget Office. And that, I believe we have someone in chambers if anyone else has a question.
Are there any further questions from council members? Seeing?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilperson Charland.
I would like to, uh, call Chief Cornell up if, uh, if you're here for that.
Good morning, Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer.
Uh, so I do, I, I, I saw Pete nodding over there that this is important to him as well, but I do have, I guess maybe it would be helpful for me to understand what all the softwares you have that and what they do, because we keep getting updates for your softwares and JD or this or whatever it might be, and I don't understand necessarily, like, are, is there redundancy? Is there a way that this could be? I, I know that was part of the big JD or the, the RFP proposal that we did a while ago, but I, I'm curious, like, like, what is it that this does that the other softwares can't do? Is there a way that we can start to streamline some of this?
It's a good question. Um, so this, this specifically is for, um, Questica budgeting software now owned by Unisolutions, uh, and this, um, allows us to actually create the forward-looking aspect of the budget, um, you know, the salaries, um, we plan out for five years, and this helps with salaries, benefits, workers' compensation, FICA taxes, things like that. JDE is our enterprise resource planning system, and that's really the actuals, the right now, and the prior record. There are, um, definitely opportunities to look at streamlining some of the solutions, um, that we'll talk about it probably again in the next bill, um, but what we have right now is, um, a software system that we've been using for, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years, um, but that market has changed, and we will be looking to go out to RFP to see if there is a way to consolidate tools into one package, right? Like, five years ago, there wasn't necessarily one answer for all of, uh, our budgeting needs across, you know, all government markets. Um, so in this case, this system allows us to actually create the budget, and then, you know, we also have a separate software system to then turn that into a budget document. So without this system, everything would be linked via hundreds of Excel spreadsheets, um, and we, you know, the city did that up until twenty sixteen. Um, so this is the component that creates the budget, and then there are other ones that take that information and data and turn it into the published report.
Is, does this help with projections?
To, to an extent, yes. Um, this is less used on the revenue side and more, and mostly on the expenditure side.
Rather projecting expenditures.
Correct.
So saying fuel's going to cost more next year, or?
With fuel, no, we still do a lot of those calculations, um, you know, on our own and input them in. Where it is very beneficial is with, with salary. So we know that what we can do is we can say a police officer starts on August twenty-twenty-four, and then we can set it so that their known collective bargained rates, um, and their known increases from PO one, two, three, four, master, you know, fifteen years from now, those are already worked in and calculated. So what it's doing is it's taking what we know about salaries and turning it into, okay, we have this many months at this rate, this many months at this rate, that gives you a blended total for what that person's cost actually would be, because otherwise what we would be doing is using the highest amount and just multiplying it out. So on the salary side is where it becomes very helpful.
Gotcha. It, it would be, I think it would be helpful, at least for me, but maybe for the rest of us, to, to kind of have a list of, like, these are the, uh, integral softwares that we're using to make budgeting work, um, uh, you know, so we know what this is. How long are we extending this contract for?
Just through one more year.
Through one more year.
And then we expect the RFP to go out later this year.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Further discussion? Councilman Coghill followed by Councilperson Warwick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I really didn't have any questions, but he wrote some questions for me in his questions, so, um, so.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. That's all I learned, you know. So, so five hundred thousand dollars just for one year?
No, that is the course of the entire contract, so right now we would be adding a sixth year, and that would get it up to five hundred thousand dollars. It is approximately eighty-six thousand dollars, and that's been consistent throughout the course of this contract.
So six years, starting when? Are we in the middle of it, or we?
We are nearing the end, so this resolution would allow us to extend for one more year.
Oh, extend for one more year at eighty-six.
Correct.
Thousand dollars. So that's kind of the yearly rate.
Yes.
Oh, okay. And then when we're done with this, we'll sign a new contract, or?
So it, it depends, um, if there are.
Just keep extending?
Well, no. So we, what we would do is we would issue an RFP that, in a perfect world, would be able to combine some of the tools together, uh, and then depending on how that RFP goes, we will sign a new contract either with a new vendor, or if it's the same vendor, it would still be a brand-new contract.
So the vendor calculates everything from, um, pay raises to, you know, like you said, collective bargaining units, we know kind of what they're, what they're going to be looking at, um, that factors in benefits, factors everything in, is that right?
So it's, it's less of a consultant doing the calculations for us, it's just the setup of a software system to help us, you know, input those things in.
So we don't need, nobody mans the other end?
No. It's, it's us with our numbers.
Automatic, like a button, and it's like, well, there it is.
Correct.
And the benefit of that is to know what our forecast is for payroll next year, basically.
The, the benefit is really time efficiencies, um, otherwise we probably would need one or more people whose full job it is, is to just make sure that all of our different spreadsheets for each department are consolidating into the budget.
So, so we're, we're tied into needing that information to craft our budget. It's not just beneficial for us to look at the forecast and be like, okay, it's good to have those projections so we can plan properly, but we actually need this in order to?
We could make a budget without it. It would be much more, it would be much more difficult. It's our data in, and it remains our data throughout.
Right, right. Okay, so five hundred thousand, basically a little less than a hundred thousand a year.
Correct.
Yeah. Would we require every department to do what you're saying if we didn't have this, or?
Well, we would, I mean. OMB and council budget would likely do it on behalf of the departments.
Okay. All right, Patrick, that's, that's, I'll be supportive today. I was just curious.
Thank you, Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, so, um, it's my understanding that we are trying, moving to like an overall ERP system, right?
Correct.
Is that, is that sort of getting to Councilperson Charland's point, is that going to be like, like an Oracle or SAP for public sector where it's, in theory, like an all-in-one system that can easily integrate with, you know, your Microsoft?
That would be the hope. Um, a lot of those ERPs now have different modules, so it's not just accounts payable and receivable. Some of them do have HR modules, and some of them do have budgeting modules. Uh, the way we would structure that ERP process would have those modules as potential future add-ons later, right? Because the big need would be for the immediate financial processes, um, so no matter what, we would need kind of another, another solution as we move and get ready for that. That ERP project will take years.
Will take years. Right, right. Just to, so, um, and, and is also costs a lot of money as well. I mean, it's, it's just something to, to understand, like, when you do move from all these disparate little systems, which is just how, I mean, it's just the nature of it, it is extremely expensive and time-consuming to consolidate all that data and get it into your new system and keep other systems running at the same time.
Correct. By the time we get there with JDE, it will have been fifteen years.
Wow, okay. All right. That's all for me. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm having a hard time getting to my, um, microphone button. So, um, I, over the years of sitting on council, have asked lots of hard questions about our technology purchases, and I think my colleagues have heard me say recently in the last year or two that I'm very impressed by the work that Director Norman is doing to wrangle all of the needs of all of our city departments, and then most efficaciously, but also economically, go through the process of figuring out what software capacities match all the needs of all the departments. And I am always impressed by her presentations during budget season, but the last one that she presented that helps update us, I think, as council members on the complexities of those different needs and different departments and the different phases that she's going to, to bring softwares up to date, but also to re-bid them out, um, you know, was last presented in December. So I, I would suggest, um, and I'll talk to council leadership more about this, if it's maybe a good time mid-year now to have IMP and Director Norman refresh us on where they're at with the kind of citywide progress, to make sure, as I, I used to say in years past, that just because there is something on the market with lots of bells and whistles doesn't mean that a certain department needs all those bells and whistles, and maybe that they were just getting kind of sold by salespeople. Uh, but I don't feel that way now. I do feel that there is a really great steering committee that she has formed that is looking very hard to, um, ask the questions that we are asking her at the table, um, before they come to us at the table. So, um, I'll just put that out there, and I would really appreciate, that's all, keeping a close eye on, are these expenditures, because they are enormous. Uh, but I think this is a very good example of a software that would cost us more if we had a live person doing it. Um, imagine computing all of the nuances by the month and the different union agreements and the pay increases and the HR costs out for five years for one person, let alone doing that four thousand times, uh, for four thousand employees. So, um, I'm supportive of this one today, but also I do think it would be helpful for all of us to kind of get the bird's-eye view of how all of this is progressing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that. I, I think a briefing, to Councilperson Charland's point, I think a briefing would be help, more helpful than, or more, uh, whatever the forum is, it doesn't really matter, um, some sort of a refresher is great. Uh, we used to receive, I think, quarterly updates, it was an Excel spreadsheet, it was every single technology that IMP works with for every single department, and it was almost too much to digest in Excel spreadsheet format. There's a lot, and it, you know, they're, they all have funny names, and they all have different costs, and it's hard to tell exactly what they do. So I, I just want to echo, I think, a briefing or a, a post-it under, or some sort of, um, refresher would be great. Um, any further discussion on this bill? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill eighteen eighty-five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill eighteen sixty-five.
Bill eighteen eighty-five.
Oh, sorry. I apologize, I moved ahead. So for the record, we voted on eighteen eighty-four, it was an affirmative recommendation for Bill eighteen eighty-four. We are now moving on to Bill eighteen eighty-five.
Bill eighteen eighty-five, resolution amending Resolution Number four sixty-nine of two thousand twenty-four, which authorized an amended agreement with Workiva, Inc., to provide a subscription-based publishing software solution by extending the term for an additional one year and increasing approved amount by fifty-six thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents for a new total cost not to exceed two hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents over six years.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion?
Second.
Second, with discussion, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Madam Chair. So, um, to my colleagues again, this is, uh, similarly supportive of both our Budget Office and the Administrative Budget Office, um, as to the extent that I, that I can see. And then also, um, similarly to the last bill, this is extending for one year, and that additional cost is in the ballpark of fifty-six thousand dollars. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, uh, Councilperson Charland.
Yeah, sorry, I, I just, the same question, what, what does this do?
Yeah, um, I knew it was worth staying here. Patrick Cornell, Chief Financial Officer. So this one in particular is when we get all of our budget numbers, um, how do we actually turn it into the three-hundred-something-page operating document? Uh, and I think the best anecdote here is, um, you know, if you had, if you as council made a last-minute change, uh, to the budget, that one number will impact hundreds of places throughout the entire document, and with the software service that, that this provides, you can change it once and not have to dig through the ninety-nine other times to change the number. And I'm sure Director McDevitt will acknowledge that that is incredibly helpful, um, and that, that is time and efficiency, so it, it links all of the data in, uh, and allows us to keep kind of reference to the budget numbers. OMB also uses this to do our quarterly reports, we use it for our, um, Parking Enhancement District reports, the Mobility Enhancement District reports, anything that kind of comes out in a regular fashion, um, we are also using this as a reporting tool.
So this makes all of the budget documents into a digestible format for us and, and keeps them in line so that?
Correct.
Okay. Um, yeah, again, I don't know what's out there, and I think, I was saying to Councilman Coghill, we're like at a disadvantage here, because we don't, we don't see all these softwares all the time, but it does, it does feel like there should be, like, ways to streamline this in, in some way, um, but, you know, I don't, not, not my expertise by any means, but it would be nice to, to have some savings here.
Agreed. And I think some of these vendors, um, have chosen to specialize in their one thing. Um, I agree, I would expect them to kind of tap into all aspects of the budget process, but some of them are choosing not to.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilperson Warwick.
Do, do all these systems that you use, do they work with each other, or are you like inputting?
That, so that's a good question, too. These ones do not need to talk to each other directly, um, it's simple imports and exports of, of basically open data for us, like, of our export of the budget numbers via Excel goes into this, and that's all we need.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sure there are more complicated ones out there, but for us, we don't, we don't need to rely on that connection.
Okay. And just to be, just to sort of go back to the overall ERP question, if there, I mean, w, when this happens, then we won't need these other softwares anymore, or these will, will, will integrate with the larger ERP?
It's, depends on the route we take with the ERP. They could, um, be encompassed into a solution, or they would similarly work with these other tools. Um, right now, for JD Edwards, what we do is we take the budget numbers, the same things we're importing into this system, and import them into JD Edwards. Um, so that, they, again, those ones are not actively, um, linking up and refreshing every night or anything like that, but, um, it, they might encompass it, it depends on what options the city's looking for.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill eighteen eighty-five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Thanks very much. New papers, Bill eighteen sixty-five.
Bill eighteen sixty-five, resolution amending Resolution eight ninety-eight of two thousand twenty-four, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with EDOC Technologies LLC for the implementation of an enterprise-wide content management system to add funding for document imaging for the Bureau of Police by increasing the approved amount by thirty-one thousand six hundred forty dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed three million thirty-one thousand six hundred forty dollars over one year.
This under my committee, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, a motion approved.
I'm sorry, this is Councilwoman Gross's.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know, I heard Pittsburgh Police and I thought.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill eighteen sixty-five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, Bill sixteen, eighteen sixty-six.
Bill eighteen sixty-six, resolution amending Resolution nine- Bill 1866, Resolution Amending Resolution 937 of 2024, which authorized the mayor and the directors of the Departments of Innovation and Performance, Finance, and Public Safety to enter into an amended agreement with B-3 Solutions, Inc. for the continued provision of software maintenance and support services for critical applications and transition guidance by increasing the approved amount by $12,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $2,141,321 over eight years.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Discussion, Councilperson Charlin.
Someone here to talk about this? About the B-3?
Yes.
Right, sir.
I'm Pat Fosnot. I'm a commander with the Bureau of Police and I oversee the administrative services.
I'm Gwendolyn Moore, Assistant Director of Business Technology, Department of Innovation and Performance.
Thank you for being here. So all I know about B-3 is we've been trying to get out of this contract for as long as I've worked on this floor. And we're continuing to extend it. What does this software do? And what is, what is the end game here?
For this, this particular request, the previous motion for E-Docs is where we translated all of our police data for the past 17 years from, into the E-Doc system to maintain. In order to take it from B-3 and put it into E-Docs, there's a final piece needed that, it's my understanding that they need it to be able to have a searchable index of all the data. So this, we were assured that this would be the final piece, and it is in the contract with them that this is the final piece to remove us from B-3.
So, and, and will this remove us from B-3 altogether or just in the, for the police?
That's a good question. Right now, I'm in discussions with Finance. As you know, Finance is purchasing, or I should say configuring software to replace our, the application developed by B-3 for real estate and individual self-assessment tax. They're in the final phases of that. However, we consider in order to verify that the new system is calculating accurately, that we should do dual processing for first quarter taxes next year. So I just got a call, as I said, from Finance saying that they may need to amend the contract so that they can do dual processing for next year because B-3 will need to assist them in their portion of the process to verify that the new CSS system is accurate. A meeting with Finance on Friday will determine if additional funding is needed to do that, and they'll also determine if they need additional time. But as I said, we agree that we would terminate the contract as of December 2025. I'm positive that the police items will be completed. However, Jen Gula, Director Gula, has identified that she may need additional three months, maybe even six months to verify that the two systems are calculating the taxes correctly. So we will be back more than likely to extend it based on the request from Finance.
Yeah, the, the B-3 is, I, at least from what I understand, it's like because we can't move out of it, we continue to have to extend it and extend it. And I hope that other softwares don't put us in that situation if we want to move, move on from them.
Actually, you're correct. We had, we did have 48 applications supported by B-3. Some were developed and some were developed and supported by B-3. Now we're down to the one for imaging for police and real estate and ISAT. So we have essentially gone from 48 down to three applications being supported by them.
All right. Well, thank you for giving us an update on that. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
I'm just looking at their website. Are we like their...
Your mic's off.
What's that? Oh.
Sorry. Thank you. I'm just looking at their website. Are we their main client? I mean, are we their primary client?
No, not any longer.
Oh, okay.
At this point, they're not doing any development.
I got it.
They're just assisting in the transition from B-3 applications to the new. And again, as I said, Finance is migrating away from ISAT and real estate custom developed by them to the commercial off-the-shelf application from CSS.
Got it. Okay. I'm just, they're a Pittsburgh company. That's why I was just looking at their...
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
But the concern that we had, it was all custom-developed applications.
Oh, okay.
And now we want to migrate to commercial off-the-shelf applications.
Got it. Got it. Okay. That makes sense. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I'll say, I will be interested to hear an update after your conversation with Finance, and maybe we can talk to Finance directly.
Yes.
Want to make sure that if the, if the technology transition is happening in the first three months of the calendar year, when we know that's big property tax collection time, that that goes smoothly, that our constituents don't feel the impacts of a transition in technology during that time. So that's the conversation I'd like to have, but I wanted to mention it here today as well.
Yes, that's just my estimate when she's saying dual processing.
Sure.
I'm not really sure what the timeframe is, but that would be my estimate.
Understood. Thank you. We'll follow up directly.
Just a real quick question. Was it originally, was there a bid originally on this contract?
For B-3, it was a...
I know it's an extension, but was it originally?
The original contract was based on state, state pricing, Co-Stars. The original pricing with B-3.
Yeah, I just have a lot of concerns about this because this has been going on for a long time. And I think we continue to say we need something and maybe we don't really need something. And I think council actually needs to hire somebody who gives us an independent audit and some opinions on what's happening in IMP. And as I get ready, before I leave, I'm merging some departments. I've been talking to some of my colleagues here, and I'm wondering how some of these things will, will affect those changes, too. So with that said, I'm going to vote no today.
But just to your comment, though, we are doing competitive bidding for all of our software purchases unless they fall under a cooperative agreement. And in many times, we still go out to bid for those. And to your point, your question earlier, we also do have a complete software inventory, and we also have a five-year strategic roadmap for software that I'm sure Heidi would like to review with you when she returns.
I actually think, I remember something, there was some controversy when Bill Paduta was in office about this contract. And so I'm just gonna...
Yes, that's correct.
I just don't feel comfortable voting for it today, so I'm not going to vote for it.
And that's why we, you're absolutely right, and that's exactly why we were trying to migrate away from them. And now we're down to only three applications being supported by them from 48. So it's taken us about seven years to migrate away, but as you know, we had the plan five years, I'm sorry, seven years ago to migrate away in three years. But because of the needs of police and finance and the other departments, it took a lot longer to find addition, to find different solutions.
And for the, for the final piece on the police end, I, I share your concerns, and I actually took it to the Law Department and said, does this current contract cover this last piece? Do we have to get another contract or can we force them to, to just do this? And Law said that it was outside the scope of the contract, get the final piece.
Okay.
Share your concerns.
Yeah, I have a lot of concerns. Some of it, no. Thank you.
Councilman Cocke.
Thank you. So the three applications, that will wrap up this year? Soon?
The police imaging should be done by December.
Okay.
And Finance is in the final phases of the development, or I should say the configuration of the real estate and the ISAT replacement. But next year, as Councilwoman Strasburg identified, for first quarter taxes, we don't want to just, I'm sorry, Finance does not want to just rely on the new system. They want to do dual processing under the current B-3, which they know is accurate, and compare that to the new system processing so that we call it dual processing of the same taxes so that we're sure that it's correct.
I understand that. That's, that makes sense to me. But at the end of the first quarter of next year, we will be done with B-3.
You would have to ask Jen Gula that question. I don't know if she wants to do dual processing for first payment, second payment, and last payment. I'm not sure. But as I said, I'm meeting with her on Friday.
But the applications that they support still will be finished with the police department. That'll be concluded.
Those are the three remain.
The only thing will be reliant on how long we need to compare.
That's correct.
Transfer period. So they're no longer doing any more services for us. We're just hiring them to assist us to compare or make sure. Why are we doing that, I guess? So the numbers jibe, is that right?
Correct.
So, so we don't have some, okay. So we can do a three-month, three-month extension then?
Again, I'm not sure. I'm meeting with Finance on Friday. They just identified to me on Monday that this was the case because I, as you know, I've been working with each of the departments to try to get them to migrate away and get replacement systems for many years.
Yeah, I'm not guessing as to do we need them for a first quarter, two quarters, or three quarters. But it is possible to do a three-month extension? Do you know?
Based on your approval.
Okay, that's what I'm asking you, I guess. And the company obviously has to offer it.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I just don't know if we do monthly or by quarter extensions, but, okay, either way.
I'll have more information on Friday.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1866, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No.
No. Thank you. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Bill 1867.
Bill 1867, Resolution Amending Resolution 119 of 2025, which authorized an agreement or agreements with Root Smart Technologies, Inc. through November 30, 2027, to provide trash and recycling routing optimization software that provides turn-by-turn directions to environmental service drivers at a cost not to exceed $247,127 by adding the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance as a signatory.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? I did have a question about this. I'm sorry, this is amending an existing resolution. I will not make comment on this. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1867, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
New papers, Bill 1848, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to execute a quitclaim deed or deeds and any other necessary or appropriate documents, agreements, and instruments conveying as-is all of the city's right, title, and interest, if any, in Block 25P, Lots 11 and 12, in the Second Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, 2608 Penn Avenue, Council District 1, to the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for consideration of $1 contingent upon the mayor and director of the Department of Finance first entering into a cooperation agreement or agreements with the URA, setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to these initial conveyances, and further setting forth the rights and obligations of the city and the URA relating to the subsequent disposition of this property to a third party at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Chair, I have my hand up.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I think the effort here, I think, I've asked about this specific parcel, which is at 26th and Penn Avenue, which is the historic OMI building. Before it was OMI, it was a police precinct. Some members of the public know it because it was featured in the Netflix film, I think, Mindhunter. Maybe I've got the name of it wrong. I don't remember the answers. But it is kind of next to one of the QW or QWC warehouses. It's in the middle of the Strip District, but it looks like a little historic, you know, city building. And I, when I was on, the representative for the Strip District, you know, I'm well on the record of opposing it being sold off because, as I've said before, as the Strip District rapidly changes, we don't really know what kinds of facilities we will need as a city in, as it becomes a residential neighborhood, but also as office offices. But I just fully acknowledge that I do not represent the Strip District now and Councilman Wilson does. But as I look at this bill, I believe that the language is written like it was a treasure sale property with a quitclaim, but it is a commissioned city building. And those of us who've been on council a long time recall that when we very rarely dispose of a building or abandon, I think it's a building or like a piece of city park, or when we, when we, I think a good example is when we sold some of the libraries that the city owns. Now we own like about half, but about half of them we sold to the Carnegie Library nonprofit. And we had to go to an orphans court. We did, it's a different legislative language. So I believe that this bill is written like it's, like it's, you know, it used to be someone's house and we took it by treasure sale. But that is not what it is. It is, you know, like a commissioned piece of city property. So I believe that it has to go through like a public hearing and go to orphans court, and it's a different legislative process. So I'm wondering if we could get someone to speak to that? For example, the most recent one I could find in Legistar working on my phone, I apologize, sitting in my car between events, is that a piece of Enright Park. So some of us recall the Penn Plaza kind of saga, but there was a reformation of the parcel boundaries while Councilman Burgess was on council. And so the new site was kind of swapping out a piece of public property. And that in Legistar is written differently. It's written that it requires a public hearing and goes to orphan court, similar to the library disposition. So I believe that this, this language just isn't the correct language.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Wilson is raising his hand for interrogatory, if you're amenable.
Thank you.
In my understanding, this is similar to the, the old firehouse on Troy Hill that went through a similar process. And I guess I'm not seeing, I'm not aware of anything different. And that was a city-owned property. And, you know, that went through an RFP process once it was transferred. I'm not aware of this legislation being, the way it's written being different than that, and there wasn't a public hearing for that property.
It's possible that what it did years before that, if you wouldn't mind, I think we should probably ask the Law Department. Because I, I've lived through doing it the other way several times, and several other council members would remember that as well. Again, the, I think the Enright Park one was the most recent. And I, I can't explain what would be different between that one and the other.
Yeah. Are you able to help us understand what the, like, what is the reason? Can you, can you say it in, like, why, why we would ask for an opinion on this?
Sure, because we wouldn't want to do something that we're not allowed to do under state law, which is sell off public assets without the proper public hearing and going to orphans court. So I'm reminded of like the Hazelwood Library property, I think the East Liberty Library, we owned it. And then when the Carnegie Library had the plans to like raise money and build a new one, we went to, we, that bill was required to, like, we didn't have the authority alone, like a simple vote of council. Is it sufficient under the law? And so it was required to also have a court date and a court judgment to say that, yes, this is no longer held in the public trust and it's no longer needed as a city facility. So the jurisdiction does not rely, reside entirely at city council. We're only part of the process.
Once again, I would say I'm not seeing anywhere where this is different than the Troy Hill property that was a city...
Right. And neither one of us are lawyers. We should have lawyers.
A city-owned parcel, and that was only three years ago.
It's not a city-owned parcel. You know, a city-owned parcel is like a treasure sale property, right? And this is a public building. So that's different.
Is there anyone here that can speak to that? Yeah, I'd like to move this forward if there's-
Well, I'm going to call for a law opinion then. I think it's a simple question, and they should be able to answer it simply. But again, you can't do a simple vote of council to like sell off the city county building. You can't do a simple vote of council to sell off Carnegie Park. You know, it's not supposed to be that simple.
I mean, we're in public right now, so.
Yeah, David Gager, legend, policy director, City of Pittsburgh, not a lawyer, so cannot answer the legal question. I do enjoy playing one on TV quite a lot, but I can just confirm for Councilman Wilson that the language is the same as the Troy Hill Fire Station.
That's what I thought. So I would like not, I would like to move this forward. We can't even take care of this building.
I say, do I have the floor, or does Councilman Wilson have the floor?
Councilwoman Gross still technically has the floor.
Appreciate it. Mr. Gager, are you aware of whether or not the firehouse that we're talking about in Councilman Wilson's district was previously decommissioned? Or what the history of that parcel was?
I do not know the full history of the Troy Hill Fire Station parcel, no. I do know that we successfully entered a co-op and have since disposed of the property as approved.
Right. And do you know the history of like the Hazelwood Library?
I do not know the full history of the Hazelwood Library building. I can only say-
Have you read the legislation?
Yes.
For disposing of the Hazelwood Library?
Yeah, so the former Hazelwood Library building, the legislation for that is similar to the Troy Hill Fire Station one, which came after the Hazelwood Library legislation. All of these bills have used similar language.
I believe you're incorrect. Because it definitely went to orphans court.
I can't speak-
Before it was disposed.
Sure, I can't, like I said, I can't speak to the full history of the parcel, simply just confirming that the legislative language-
The final legislative language, right, after we had been given permission by the courts. So is there anyone in council who's lived through that district here as long as me, lived through that voting? I'm not sure if Councilwoman Lavelle is here, but there's a specific process for decommissioning. And I'm looking at the one that we did for the part of Enright Court that was, again, not, it was not an abandoned parcel. And so the legislative language first has to have us abandon the property. And then we can sell it. So I'm going to vote no if council members are going to throw this today, but I definitely request a legal opinion.
Thank you. So noted.
I don't believe that we need a council vote to request a legal opinion. And I believe that my asking for one precludes you from approving this at standing committee.
While we, while we check on that procedural rule, we will move on to a few other council members. So I believe I saw, okay, I believe I saw Councilmember Warwick first, Councilman Coghill, Councilwoman Kail Smith, did you have your hand up as well? Yep, okay, so we'll go in that order.
Well, it's funny, because the Hazelwood Library, now I have like other-
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, so I have other questions now about the Hazelwood Library one, just because this is open up a whole can of worms. But just quickly, so on this building, because I was curious too, when the U R A team met with me to sort of talk about this, I was curious about the state of this building, like how, you know what I mean, like how much is it costing us to maintain? And what could it be used? I mean, I don't know, I'm not familiar with the building. Or could we use it for something else? I mean, a building is, I mean, I'm always of the mind of never sell real estate, just hold on to it, because it's always going to be valuable, especially in this particular neighborhood, right, like property values are going up and up and up. But I, so I was curious about that. About the cost, like what's it costing us to maintain this building every year?
I don't have that number. I don't think law would have that number either.
Or is it at the request of D P W? Like, I mean, like, you know, that's what I'm sort of wondering. Sure. Oh, right, just, so, so we're looking at to-
Eighteen sixty-eight?
Hand over, yeah, eighteen forty-eight, to hand over the O M I building in the Strip District to the U R A so that they can sell it, presume, right, that they can sell it to be redeveloped or turned into something else.
Yeah, there are representatives from the U R A here that can speak to, you know, their plans and the disposition process for it. But what I can confirm is that the legislative language being used here, right, is similar to the, you know, legislative language we've used before for buildings like the Carnegie Library, which to your, I think your question, we actually never completed a sale there, and I believe that co-op has since expired. But since then, there have been other sales, like the Troy Hill Fire Station and Councilman Wilson's district, where we did use similar legislation, used a similar co-op process, and the U R A did successfully complete a sale. But I don't have the cost of holding the O M I building, you know, how much it's costing the administration. I do know both O M B and Finance have reviewed this. The administration is comfortable with entering this co-op and disposing of the property through the U R A.
Well, so I guess that's my, I mean, maybe this is interrogatory with Councilman Wilson, like where's the, where's the ask coming from to sell this building? Go ahead.
I had conversations with Director Hornstein in the past. I know that the community there, also whenever I first got in, there was some, there was a lot of interest in the property. But, you know, just like other properties in my district, Troy Hill and East Ohio Street, we formed a committee through the U R A and had several community members on it, or I'm sorry, all community members on it. And the property was conveyed to, you know, the appropriate party. Like whoever was chosen in that R F P process.
No, no, that's not what I'm, I'm just asking, like, like, so the building is there. I mean, I can talk about the Hazelwood Library, which I will in a second, but, I mean, is it D P W that's like, this building is just like, oh, like a major burden, like we can't, like, so who is asking to get to unload this building?
Yeah, quite frankly, the U R A was asking for confirmation from D P W that this building was ready to go in terms of like being sold. And in that email exchange, the director expressed the, I believe he expressed the burden. I mean, expressed to me, if he was here, he'd come up and express the burden that it is on the city. And then ultimately, so the history of this bill, this was introduced during regular meeting. And then it was, I didn't introduce that bill, and then it was struck from the, struck from introduction after it was introduced. And so then I put my name as a sponsor out to reintroduce it, because I do believe that we should go forward with this since we can't even take care of this building. And we need to continually look at our, look at our buildings and understand whether or not we would, you know, use that in the future, or is there a better use for it right now? And my understanding is that this would be a better use to, you know, go through this process for the R F P process, and this building could see a new life.
And is there someone who's interested in this building and interested in buying it and doing something with it?
There have been several parties that have approached, not only myself, I mean, I would say like two or three, but they approached the community. And I have had at least one meeting with someone that was interested, but I'm not the one that makes those decisions. And, you know, I'm comfortable with an R F P process, not just, you know, I'm not, you know, I would never be the one that would make that decision, so I have to facilitate how that would happen. And this is a process that I've been comfortable with in the past. I've seen it be successful. And I'm looking forward to that happening again here.
Yeah, I mean, I do, I, it would be nice to know just like how, you know what I mean, like what is the, what is the cost burden? Because I do, I mean, just generally, like, you know, buildings, I mean, property values are skyrocketing. Like, this is a building in a very, you know, desirable neighborhood. And it seems like if all things were equal and we weren't, I mean, I'll tell you about Hazelwood Library, I mean, that building's about to fall down. And I'm wondering about the U R A's obligations, like, under these agreements, but, I mean, that building's about to be, I mean, it's, you know, that's just why, I mean, I like hesitate, I mean, I don't know, I I just am always of the mind of holding on to a, I mean, it's just like good, good sense to hold on to a property, even if we could rent it out, like even if we, that's why I'm curious to know, like, what is the state of the building? Like, is it boarded up? Is the roof, like, is it falling to bits? Or is it like, I don't know, I'm not familiar with this building.
I'm happy to, I'm sorry, if we're still on interrogatory, I would love for Director Hornstein or someone familiar with the building to come and talk about this at the table, so.
So just while I'm still, so with the Hazelwood Library and the U R A, so under this agreement, with the U R A, so let's say we, you know, give it to the U R A for a dollar, is then the U R A responsible for maintaining the building until it's sold to someone else?
So this legislation authorizes the administration to enter a co-op agreement with the U R A that sort of spells out those rights and responsibilities if that co-op looks substantially similar to the one that was used for the Hazelwood Library or the Troy Hill Fire Station. The costs of sort of maintaining the building are still with the city. The U R A has a responsibility through their disposition process to like market it, sell it, dispose of the property. And they're responsible for the costs associated with that process.
So the city would still have to maintain this building if we gave it to, so with the Hazelwood Library right now, just, I'm like switching subjects. But the roof is about to go, right, and Hines has, there's a, they have offered a match, I want to say one fifty, I can't remember exactly. And I am like agonizing, together with Director Hornstein, about us matching that, because it's, doesn't seem like a lot of money, but it is, but when I look at Hazelwood in general as a community, like a hundred and fifty grand would go a long way toward, I don't know, you name something else in the neighborhood. So I'm like very ambivalent about, you know, asking for that to go to maintain the roof on a building that is not, that there is no plan for this building, but it's very dear to the community, and it's a beautiful building. I mean, you go inside, it's just gorgeous. And it's really sad to see what is happening to it. So I guess I'm wondering about the benefit, because Hazelwood Library, the U R A, has not done, has not managed to find somebody to buy this building and save it. And so I'm wondering, I don't know, I just am kind of like, what is the benefit of this agreement? And what is the plan that the U R A has? And what is the state of the building, right? Because if the building's okay, I don't know.
So, again, I believe folks are trying to contact the director, who can speak more directly to the state of the O M I building. Each one of these projects is different. So there are significant challenges and significant challenges presented when, you know, trying to dispose of the Hazelwood Library. You are correct, it's a very large, beautiful historic building that has fallen into quite a state of disrepair before there was even, you know, a process started to dispose of it. And that has been a challenge. Maybe to answer your question as directly as possible, though, perhaps one of the benefits of moving forward with this legislation and disposing of the O M I building is that it, yes, while the city has to maintain that building during the disposal process, it is likely to go quicker with the O M I building than it did the Hazelwood Library, barring, you know, Director Hornstein coming up here and telling us about, you know, significant challenges with this, you know, smaller building in a more desirable real estate market. The proceeds generated from that sale and future savings to the city and not having to maintain that property free up budgetary authority and capacity than to invest in properties like the Hazelwood Library moving forward for the, you know, mothballing remediation, hopefully, you know, rehabilitation of it.
And has the O M I building been appraised? Do we know what it's worth?
I can't speak to that.
Is there anybody who can speak to that? Okay, I guess I don't have any, I'm sort of, I'm like, you know, I'm in the middle on this. I guess I still just have some questions.
Okay. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I think you bring up some good questions, you know, the Councilwoman Work. So what's the intent, I guess? To put it in the U R A's hands, and U R A decides whether they're going to sell it? They're going to sell it?
Yeah, they would have the responsibility of disposing of the property.
Okay, so the profit of that sale, say, again, prime real estate here, right, even if they have the territor, it's worth something there. Unlike the municipal courts building, which I'd love to get into, but I'm not, I'm in the spirit of that today, okay? Because this-
I applaud you for being able to pull that back.
Right, right, so, so say there's a three hundred thousand dollar profit. It's in the U R A's hands now because we gave it to the U R A. Where's the money go?
I believe there is a profit-sharing mechanism that is included in the co-op agreement.
Between the city and the U R A?
Between the city and the U R A.
Yeah, what's the percentages?
I don't know that.
Why don't we just sell it as a city?
Well, this gets to a conversation that, you know, we've had at this table. If I put my U R A hat back on for a moment, you know, I've had this conversation at this table multiple times about sort of the differences and challenges with each sort of sales process and the pros and cons of each one of them. I think that if the city were to dispose of this property directly, you know, it becomes subject to a highest bidder. And, you know, maybe that is preferable to, you know, this council. However, the U R A's process allows for both consideration of profit and sort of public benefit and has the ability to select. Sure, that is an example of public benefit that the U R A is often interested in. I'm not sure if this property is, you know, ideal for affordable housing, but the point being is that they can sort of negotiate a sale and pick an end user that is not exclusively based on highest bidder's sales price.
Got it. So, okay, I guess that explains. I'm trying to figure out why we're using the U R A as a, as a real estate agent, basically, right? And why are they getting part of the cut? Why can't we just put that right into the city coffers? And as you said, your answer to that is so we can have somewhat, some kind of control over the site.
That's correct, so that, you know, we have some level of control.
I guess it depends how much that control cost us, right, to me. Is it fifty percent of the sale price? Is it ten percent? You know, so, so I don't mind having the U R A deal with it and take it off our hands and not be in our lap. But I would love to know what the split is.
Sure.
On that. You don't know that.
I do not know what the proposed split is on this.
Okay, okay, so anyway, back to the general conversation. We don't have to have this conversation now, but the municipal courts building. I'm waiting to hear back from the administration still, okay? We're paying, we know the raw numbers on this. I don't know what this building costs us per year. And when Director Hornstein, if he gets here, then he could fill us in on that. But we know that building's costing us three, four hundred thousand dollars a year, okay? I know that.
Okay.
Okay, so not to mention, it's like a powder keg, right? The roof, the HVAC, you name it, could go any day now. This building's thirty-five years old. No major improvements have been done. It's just like a matter of time, right? Where it's going to be big, big expenses. So will the U R A take this building, is what I'm asking you? We'll gladly share the profits of that one. How's that?
Sure, so I'm, you know, cannot answer that for the U R A. That would be a great conversation for them to have with the administration. I'm, Councilman, I'm not up to speed on the municipal courts building, so I can't speak that.
Understood, understood. I don't want to even go down that path, but I'm just saying, that's just so many similar conversations, so many similarities to- But I'm just saying, that's just so many similar conversations, so many similarities to... We're talking about this building and other buildings. And I'm just wondering the fate of that building. Does it go into the URA's hand? You can have all the profit on that one, if you can find one, okay? So, um, that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Okay, well, I, I have an answer that is not from the legal department, law department. It is from our legislative affairs manager about the difference in the conveyance of, um, uh, buildings. So I'll take Chair's prerogative and, and note that now. The difference between the former, some of our former library properties and some of our other properties is not the building itself, but the way that the city acquired them. They were explicitly donated to the city by Andrew Carnegie. So those are then subject, subject to the Dedicated and Donated Property Act of 1953, which then requires a further step of approval of Orphans Court. That's the difference between those properties and this property.
That's all I wanted to know.
I mean, I can explain more on that one, because I dealt stuff with the main library...
Just a little closer to that.
Sorry, the main library in, um, Oakland. But, um, as Councilwoman Schlossberger said, uh, essentially, that land was donated by Carnegie Mellon to the city for the purpose of having, for the pub, uh, having, uh, I think, particular uses, and we made it to the Carnegie Library and the museum. So there are restrictions on what we can and can't do with the property. And in some cases, Carnegie Library, um, has to come to the city to make sure that whatever future use, in some cases, not all cases, that, um, it is within those restrictions. Um, so I would say this property wouldn't be in that same situation because it's not necessarily like that type of property. Does that make sense?
None of it makes sense to me, to be honest with you. But I just, but I also want to say that, you know, I, I'm more concerned what happens after this transaction. I'm more concerned about the public process going forward. Those are the things I worry about. This is not my district, but I just don't want to set a precedence of doing something different, you know, avoiding a public process. Because if you recall, I moved Boggs Avenue, Six Boggs Avenue, to the, the URA, which was under the city, the city had it in the real estate, um, department. And there was somebody trying to purchase it, who was a developer, and the community felt like it was a backdoor deal. So I took it back and put it, and they said the best way to do that was to move it under the URA. And it ended up back in the same place where I first took it from, back to the CDC in the Mount, in Mount Washington. And that whole pro, that was, I was assured there'd be a public process, and there was not. So I'm concerned about that part and any precedence we set forward going, going forward. Sure. This is your district, so I'm not trying to...
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to...
I'm worried about future things, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Interrogatory.
Thanks for bringing it up, because I, I do feel like we do have, uh, a good precedent, uh, in District One in terms of an RFP process that the URA has, has done, and in particular, the Troy Hill property. And there has actually been some back and forth in terms of who would eventually, like, there was, I actually can't tell you the whole history, but there has been a lot of engagement. And it has changed paths along the way. And throughout that whole process, um, everyone involved continually went to the community group meeting and, and met the community, and the community gave comment back to it outside of the RFP committee that was created. So there, I do have, um, you know, that history in District One. And I expect the same type of transparency here with this property.
Say on some board stuff.
Thank you. So, we've exhausted round one. I know that Councilwoman Gross has her hand up and would like to speak again. I, I wanted to also note that, um, Director Hornstein is not available due to illness. So, we have two options in front of us. One is to, for someone to make the motion to hold for a legal opinion. Uh, we need a motion to hold, not just a, by virtue of saying that they want a legal opinion. We need a motion and a vote. Um, or proceed today with the understanding that the bill's sponsored, and Councilwoman Gross and others will speak to one another, um, in the interim prior to final passage. Those are our options, as I see it.
Second round?
Second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Exelis, I'm glad you're here.
Councilwoman Gross, you cut out.
Oh, I apologize.
We hear you now.
Thank you for sharing this. Um, can you also explain why Enright court at the Penn Plaza site? Similarly, wasn't, it wasn't a quick claim language that we see in front of us, but it was, um, required to go to Orphans Court? That would not be, you know, donated by Andrew Carnegie.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gross, uh, could you say that entity again? I didn't quite hear you.
It wasn't an entity, it was a piece of city property in East Liberty.
Okay.
Um, and it was Enright Park.
Ah.
And it was, um, a property swap. But it also had different legislative language in order to dispose of that property.
Yes, so if that property, that's Enright Park, like, if it was essentially dedicated as a park, um, then that kind of puts it in the realm of, uh, the Dedicated and Donated Properties Act, where essentially you would have to go to the Orphans Court to ensure that we're able to either encumber or, um, uh, essentially, yeah, encumber or kind of sell the property, um, because under the act, essentially, for something that's dedicated for the public use, particularly parks, we, the city, or any municipality, um, are essentially like the steward for that, uh, property for the public. And essentially, case law has kind of more so like, yeah, case law and, uh, court judges have kind of, uh, determined through the time that, as you encumber or kind of release property that's dedicated for public use, um, there needs to be some kind of intermediary to make sure that the municipality's doing it and, um, doing it for the right purposes for the public. So, to maybe bring this around, if there were other city property that weren't a dedicated park, we wouldn't be in this situation because that doesn't fall within that group. But essentially, kind of park property that are specifically dedicated for the public, we would have to go to Orphans Court to make sure that we are able to, like, uh, dispose of the property or encumber it. Does that help?
So, this gets to the crux of my question, which is, you know, we, we had cases where it was libraries that had to go to Orphans Court. Again, I recall these because I had to vote on them. And then, um, pieces of property that was parked, that we had to, again, it was different legislative language. So, what you're telling me is that there are some properties that are dedicated, whether they are parks or whether they're libraries, they, they fall under this category of being dedicated to the public. And that you know that this building is not dedicated to the public. And so then, my question to you is, how do you know? And how do, how do all of us know then, which properties are which? And is there a list, and can you provide it?
Um, so I would say the trigger usually for the law department are parks, because those are typically dedicated. And to answer your question, how we would know is by going through the...
Yes, what is, what is dedicated? And how does the public know that it's dedicated?
So the deed for the property would specify that the, the restrictions on the, to start, like, you know, the deed would set the restrictions on the property. And then, typically, best practice is like the municipality would accept the dedication. So you should be able to see through both the, um, putting together between the deed and some legislation accepting the dedication.
So there's either language on the deed or there's legislation?
No, so like, the, the start would be, you would start with the deed because that would be the trigger to say, hey, I, a private owner, let's say, if, you know, if I was Carnegie Mellon and I was transferring property over to the city, I say I'm set it, I'm giving this property to the city with these specific instructions and restrictions. So that's in the deed. And then, the municipality, in this case, the city, would accept the property based on those restrictions. And I would say the best practice...
There's also ones that aren't donated.
Sorry, say it again?
The Enright Park was not donated.
But, so then...
But still had to go to Orphans Court. So it, it is not true that it is only when there's donated property.
Right, but then was it also dedic, which I don't know that specific answer because I'm not familiar specifically with Enright Park. But there's like, if it's donated and/or dedicated, which, those are like two different processes. But both would be able to trigger this process where we go to Orphans Court to get this process done. And I guess what I'll...
And now I'm asking you, now that we have that established, provide, I want you to provide a list to me, uh, this minute, of the properties that we do have that are dedicated or deed restricted.
Okay, I...
Because I know, I, when I looked at this one, I assumed that was the case, and you're telling me it is not. Um, and so just like, just to be very clear, you know 100% that this OMI building is neither dedicated nor deed restricted.
No, I didn't say that, so I couldn't, I wouldn't affirm that I, that this is 100% dedicated, donated. I would have to look through the deed and everything.
Okay, so we still need to do that? Well, I think, then council should, should have you provide that to us.
Further discussion?
Yeah, sorry, just to wrap up, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So that, that just goes back to, I think it's an open question, which legislative language we should be using here. Um, so, you know, whether we need, I don't know how much time the law department needs, um, do we need that to be a legal opinion or not, I'm open. I just, I, I understand that the representative for the Strip District has worked on this and wants to move it forward. I'm not supportive, but aside from that, I also want to be sure that council does the correct legal proc, process. And, um, it sounds that we've just been told, we're not sure yet, which is the correct legal process.
Uh, so I guess the ques, if the question is, if you want law to look to see if this is like dedicated, donated, I can prioritize that, try to get something before the end of the week. I just have to like, get someone to go look at deeds and stuff like that, so, that's... Okay, I'll take that as a yes, and I'll get started on that, so.
Further discussion, Councilmember Warwick.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess just to kind of, at least for me, just to sort of summarize, is, you know, like, what's the state of the building? What is the value of the building? Who's interested in it? Because, I mean, that to me is also like, if, you know, if someone's interested in it to just make like, you know, just, you know, make condos or whatever, like, then I'd like, and, and, and we, and the building is in such a state that it's like, ugh, we can't afford to keep this building, then I've, you know, or, or are there people interested in it wanting to do affordable housing? I mean, these are just a lot of questions, right? Because if it's somebody that's just going to do some, you know, market rate condos, then they should pay, we should, they should have a, you know, they should bid for it like anyone else, especially if there's multiple people who are interested in it. And, and again, should we be selling it at all? But that, but that to me is sort of based on the, on the, what the building looks like, right? Like, if the windows are blown out and it's falling apart and it's about to be, you know, you know, we, we just need to, like, if it's something we should just demolish or, or get rid of and have someone rehabilitate, okay, then I could understand that, right? Like, I could understand that, that dilemma. But if it's a solid building that we could potentially use in, I don't know, I just feel like there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions about... Because I agree, I mean, selling, I mean, that's, that's one of our biggest, I mean, real estate, that's, that's a bit, I mean, that's one of our assets, right? Those, those are our assets as a city, and, uh, I don't know. Okay, that's all. I just, just sort of wanted to summarize my, my, my questions. I don't know, it would be nice to hold a week and, and see, you know, get answers to those questions. I don't know if other people have those questions or, or not. I don't want to be aggressive, this is sort of new, I'm thinking about this like in real time, so.
Thank you. Council President Lavelle, followed by Councilman Coghill.
Thank you. Um, I'll be brief. One, I was, as we were going through this conversation, I was trying to think of what is a similar comparable. Um, and I realized that, uh, the old DPW station in my district on Fifth Avenue, um, which at the bottom, if, if you know the area, sits at the bottom of Fifth and Denwitty Street in Uptown, is a comparable where we entered, the city entered a cooperation agreement with the URA. The URA marketed that site, um, the URA worked with Uptown Partners, the Hill CDC and others to, and I forget how many responses we had, but we had numerous responses to the site in terms of what we want to develop. Um, ultimately selected a developer. A portion of that development is moving forward. We're now back marketing the site where DPW actually sits. Um, and it became, and I agree with your general position, which is, we shouldn't sell off assets, but there's a point where assets become liabilities. And the DPW station there had become a liability for the city. And we weren't, we hadn't invested it, um, we weren't using it. It was vacant, it was dilapidated, and so therefore, we entered a cooperation agreement. And we've done so in other similar cases, where Second Avenue Commons is now. We did the same thing there, if memory serves me correctly. Um, but what I would also like to do is our current budget director, if he'd be willing to come to the table, because he also used to be asset manager for the city. And it's my understanding, to try to answer your questions, Councilman Warwick, that this building has sat empty for at least 10 years. Like, we, it's not a building we use, it's not a building we invest in. And it's my understanding that if the city were to invest anything in it, it would probably cost us millions to do anything with it. So I just wanted to see if our director could speak to that.
Hi, Peter McDevitt, uh, City Council Budget Director, formerly the Asset Management Analyst in OMB. Uh, so about 10 years ago, we did a study of all the city's buildings, the Facilities Optimization Plan, this was one of the lists. Uh, this building has sat empty for at least 10 years, probably closer to 20. It was the old OMI building. Um, we haven't used it, it's just sitting there. Uh, I think there might still be an active water leak in the basement, all the paint is falling down. It's just kind of sitting there unused, falling apart. Um, it would take millions of dollars, because we've looked at it for different uses of, that the city might have or other nonprofits might have. But right now, it would just take so much money that we do not have to make it into a usable condition. It's just continued to sit there because we don't have a plan for it and any use for it or the money to put into it.
Thank you. Um, so, for those reasons, um, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward. Um, if we want to have, and Jesse's already said he's going to bring forward a legal opinion about whether or not this has to go through the additional Orphans, Orphans Courts process, which I don't believe it does. Um, nonetheless, we can certainly have that by Tuesday, and so, um, recommit the bill if that is indeed the case. But at this point, I, I don't see why we couldn't. And just for, from, as a URA board member, I will simply say that it will be a very open and transparent process. Um, and the benefit to having the URA do it is, we won't get, we won't dispose of the building until such time as we know we actually have a viable development. Um, and that a viable development that all parties are supportive of. So, city, URA, community, et cetera. Um, and the URA won't own the building until it's actually ready to close on it, at which point we would close and then the Strip turn it over to the private entity. Um, so I, I don't, I don't think members should be concerned about that process. But that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, I think President Lavelle answered the question I had earlier. I'm okay, and especially knowing that Councilman Wilson has done his due diligence and the community seems to be, um, in favor of moving forward, no resistance there. Uh, I, I, so, so I'll vote affirmative today, but I, I just want a couple of questions answered before final vote on Tuesday. Um, first and foremost, and since Peter, I didn't realize you were the Asset Management Director, so... So what is the advantage? Why do we turn this over to the URA? I heard Councilman, or President... I heard Councilman, or President Lavelle's explanation, that makes sense, but, and at what cost? Do you know?
So the advantage, and David covered a lot of this, we would have to sell it to the highest bidder. So then we would have no control over like how it's used after that. So if we give it to the URA, then they can take that into consideration.
I get that. Okay, and, and help me out here. I mean, what are we concerned about?
I mean, it's.
What's wrong with the highest bidder?
That's the thing, like, it, it depends on, on how you, you want to use it, how much control you want to have over that process and, and after it's disposed. So like, maybe you don't have a problem with that? Maybe some people might.
You can get them in the zoning and planning if we have to, if they're putting something in there that's not, you know, supported by the neighborhood, so. So I'm just wondering what the cut is with the URA as far as like, you know, and, and I'd love to know, like Councilwoman Warwick said, what's the value of this property?
That, that's an excellent question because this, I mean, it's catty corner from De'Anoyas, if you're familiar with that area.
It's got to be worth something, even if it's falling in, right?
Yeah.
At worst, if the building's falling down and you have to demo it and spend $300,000 to get rid of it. How many stories is it? Three?
Yeah, at least two, yeah.
Okay, so it's not that big.
Also, to go back to one of your other questions, the Section 3 of the legislation states that the city gets 20% of the proceeds after.
So they get 80%, and we get 20?
Yeah.
And, and, but we could sell it outright if we wanted to. That's okay.
I honestly have no idea how that process would work.
For something cheap, I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
If that's, if we're talking about $80,000.
Yeah.
It, you know, take our headaches away, would mean, and give it to the URA, and market it and decide what goes there and have site control. I understand that, I do. But this property, I got to imagine, has got to be, I mean, I have no idea, nobody knows, right? I mean, I, I'm just thinking where it's at, right? A million dollars? Let's just say a million dollars, right?
If I may.
Please.
I think you're going on the assumption that the highest bidder would be fair market or above, which ideally that'd be great, but there are situations where it could be.
So we're going to, we're going to give it away, basically.
It, it could, right? But the highest bidder may not necessarily mean the ideal value that we're looking for. So I think to balance with the URA saying is like, we have a little bit more control to be able to like get this to where we want to go versus like kind of just putting out there to the highest bidder, which may also not necessarily mean that that building would then get redeveloped into something else because it could be sitting on something.
Okay, can I just get before Tuesday, evaluation on it? I mean, what's it worth? Can we do that? Is that, does anybody know?
We should know if they have it.
I mean, how do we not know what this building might be worth?
I, I don't think.
This property, I should say this property, not the building.
Yeah, so I don't think that there's an appraisal, current appraisal, on the building. I don't believe that that can be done by next week. I also think that when we start talking about the, the value of the property, you know, that is a question that needs to be held in tension with exactly what's being proposed here and the, the process. So an appraisal is just going to tell you sort of what, what it's worth on the open market and without any consideration of end use.
That's right. And that's what I want to know, David. That's what I want to, I want to know what it's worth if we sold it outright without going through the URA and just went to highest bidder. That's kind of what I want to know, what does the market dictate in that spot for that size of lot? Considering the condition of the building, because if you have to remove the building, obviously it's, I don't even know what type of condition the building's in, I have no idea. I'm just saying, what's the lot worth? I mean, you know, if we were to decide to sell it outright as a city and not give it away or control the site with the URA, what, what's it worth? I mean, do we have any idea, do we have, do we have a ballpark? Do we have the property down there, same size lot that we, nothing? We have nothing on it?
I, I'm unaware.
All right, all right, all right, good enough. That's, I, I don't, I'll abstain today. Thanks.
Thank you. We're still on second round. Any further second round? Third round, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete, I'm glad you're at the table. I remember things about Facility Optimization Plan. And there were a lot of concerns that councilmember, am I there again? Sorry, there were a lot of concerns about that Facilities Optimization Plan. Again, some of us voted on it 10 years ago, it cost about a million dollars, I think it was, I forget the exact consultants that were hired. And then I was told repeatedly that the five properties in the Strip District, and again, just going back in time, I represented the Strip District, were not included in the Facilities Optimization Plan. I just checked my records because I remember us requesting the actual entire results of the plan, like the final product, and not getting it. So can you refresh my memory that those, you said that the OMI building was included in the Facilities Optimization Plan? I thought, and I was told repeatedly on the record that it was excluded, that none of the Strip District properties were actually part of this study.
Yeah, I would have to, so I tried to look it up, and it's, since the website has been redesigned, I don't know where that plan lives now on the city website or if it's on there. And I don't have access to my old files from whenever I worked in OMB, so I'd have to work with them. I honestly can't tell you for certain if it was included in that. I know we did 148 buildings and we kind of tiered them, but that building had been sat unused for so long that it may not have been included because we, it, it.
Because the previous administration tried to sell it four or five times.
Yeah, yeah, I do remember that.
Including the 10-acre tow pound and including the DSW facilities.
Yes.
And I said, you need to slow down. And my colleagues who served with me at the time will remember that I was like, hey, do not rush to sell off these properties just because a developer wants them.
Yeah, I remember that.
Because we, well, I'm still talking, that because we will, the Strip District is changing greatly, we will need to figure out what the needs of the neighborhoods are, et cetera, et cetera. So again, I'm, I'm on the record as, you know, being opposed to this. I appreciate that we have the law department looking into how we do this appropriately. I am obviously not supportive. I happen to be like parked near it now, and I, you know, as my colleagues saw over the years that I served representing the Strip District, there's a great deal of gentrification pressure on both commercial and residential. And there's a, there's a multi-story, multi-unit, multi-light-on its condos right across the street. And there continue to be a lot of development pressure. So I don't think that we should be concerned that it would sell. I think we should be concerned should we sell. And this is not, you know, just in any neighborhood. And I certainly believe there would be a, a very healthy rental opportunity here as well that could make the city money and so that it is not a cost burden. But I won't take any more time on this agenda. Again, I'm, I'm well on the record on, on this particular, this particular building. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the table is a motion to approve. All those in favor of approving Bill 1848, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No.
One no.
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain today. I just want to talk to Councilman Wilson.
Two abstentions.
I was going to abstain, but as long as I can get an answer to those two questions, you know, what's, what's the value of it? And I guess I got the other answer to the cut is 80% for the URA. So I'd love to know what the valuation of it is somewhat before Tuesday, before the final vote, but for today, aye.
Thank you. One no, two abstentions, affirmative recommendation. Thank you all. That exhausts our standing committees' agenda. Meeting announcements, next week council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, June 10th, and their standing committees' meeting on Wednesday, June 11th, both at 10:00 a.m. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes adjourned in the meeting?
Can I?
So move, second.
I'm so, I'm so sorry, I did not leave any room for council members. Councilwoman Kail Smith, comments?
Thank you. Just briefly, I just want to invite all my colleagues and anybody in the public. We're dedicating the Reem Rec Building in Mount Washington after Mr. Dunlap, he owned the Lamont, but he also was instrumental in keeping that building open and the pool open and John Massalero for the gym. So if everybody can make it Saturday at noon at Reem Rec. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments from members? So we'll proceed with a motion to approve the minutes adjourned in the meeting.
So move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting's adjourned.
Yeah. I'll be right back.